I call to order the regular meeting of the Sea Lake Port Planning Commission date of Wednesday, July 13, 2016. Please call and roll.
Commissioner Gainer.
Here.
Commissioner Spurr.
Present.
Commissioner Russell.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Here.
Chair Wicks.
Here. Acceptance of the agenda. Does anybody have anything wish to add this evening? No? Okay, so at this time I'll accept the motion to accept the agenda.
Honorable Chair, our motion, we accept the agenda as posted for tonight.
I have a first from Commissioner Gainer. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Spurr. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five oh. Citizen input. We have communications this evening. Citizens input. Do we have any input? None? Okay. And so we'll save our comments from staff and commission unless there's something really important you want to say right at this moment. We'll do that towards the end. Okay. So moving along to the consent calendar. We have the minutes in the consent calendar. Is everybody okay with the minutes? If everyone's okay, I'll entertain the motion to accept the consent calendar as posted.
Honorable Chair, I make a motion, we accept the consent calendar as posted.
I have a first from Commissioner Gainer. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Commissioner Russell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five oh. Okay. Moving right along to the regular calendar. Our first item is item A. This is James and Cindy Schul, identified as SB 16-01, UP 16-01, CE 16-03, and F 16-02. This is an application for shoreline development permit, use permit, and fence permit for a single-family dwelling in the R5 Resort High Density Residential along the shoreline and a fence exception. All residential development improvements are proposed on a .492 acre vacant parcel located at 2468 Lake Shore Boulevard, further described as APN 026 OK1-32. Dan?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Commissioner, members of the planning commission. The project before you is a shoreline development permit, a use permit, a fence permit, as well as category exemption for James and Cindy Schul. The property consists of a .492 acre parcel. It's currently vacant, however, it currently has a six-foot fence, an existing seawall, a boat ramp, and a dock and pier on the property. The property is located at 2468 Lake Shore Boulevard. And when I say vacant, there seems to be a lot of stuff on it, but the reason we're calling it vacant is most of the items I just listed, fence, seawalls, ramps, are basically accessory structures to a -- and currently there's no primary structure on the property. Basically, kind of the history of this property, at one time in 1980s, there was a boat rental there, as well as an application for a seaplane landing zone or use permit for operating seaplanes out of the site. There was a fence approved by the planning commissioner in September of 2012 for both 2468 as well as 2402 Lake Shore Boulevard. The project was in the process of renovating their dock and pier when it was brought to the attention of the city. The dock and the pier at the time was approved by the county. As you know, like every -- all development outside of the, I believe, the 778 or 779 Brumsey is kind of in the county's jurisdiction, however, a pier has to hit ground eventually, and that's in the city's boundaries. Under the city criteria, a dock and a pier is primarily, like once again, accessory use to a property. And without having a single-family dwelling or any kind of other structure, primary structure, staff required that we pursue a project for the property, as well as the applicant requesting for a new single-family dwelling, a fence, deck, fence, and a dock, as well as finishing up the dock and the pier. The general plan for this property is residential. The zoning is R5 Resort High Density Residential. This is one of the properties that we talked about at the last meeting. It's inconsistent with the general plan and the zoning. Obviously, you have a residential general plan designation, whereas the zoning is more of a resort, high-density residential. So as part of this project, they submitted an application. The original project and basically all development located along the shoreline of Lake Park requires a shoreline development permit. The development of a single-family dwelling, the fence and the pier would require a shoreline development permit. The purpose of a shoreline development permit, the sole purpose of the shoreline development is protect rare and endangered species, wetland, as well as the natural environment associated with their lake. The original plan that was submitted to the city had a single-family dwelling, portions of the single-family dwelling and the deck extending over Clear Lake. When we sent out the referrals at that time, there were some concerns by the Fish and Wildlife as well as the county. Obviously, they need permits for anything over the 779 Brumsey. So even though it's going to be elevated and extending outward, they still use in their jurisdiction. The applicant has redesigned, subsequently hearing this information and knowing that the significant environmental review for this project, the applicant opted to redesign the single-family dwelling, kind of pulling it back. So the single-family dwelling is existing further back on this side of the seawall. So it extends up to the seawall, doesn't extend over it into the jurisdiction of either the county or any of the fishing game or concerned areas. The fishing game had concern about the Clear Lake hitch. In discussions and emails with the Fish and Wildlife, basically, the revised plans met their criteria and didn't have any impacts. Staff did respond for the county, however, with the counties requiring a encroachment permit for anything extending into the lake, and since they pulled it back, that the issue there would be moved. And so now we have the plans that would still, is all on the landward side of the existing seawall, but still require the shoreline development permit. Shoreline developments permit extend to pretty much the roadway Lake Shore Boulevard. And shoreline development permits require seven findings. Basically, the findings are, will it affect the existing Clear Lake water quality? Will it negatively affect the long-term preservation of lands along Clear Lake shoreline in that area? That'll affect rare and endangered plants and animals? Whether it's compatible with the natural environment existing along Clear Lake and the shoreline area? That did not result in unnecessary removal of wetland vegetation or impairing environment, including tulies, cottonwoods, vegetation along the lake? Result in minimum disruption of soil and bank areas along the shoreline parcels? And the last finding is comply with provisions and policies and programs of Lake County General Plan, the city, county, and state and federal agencies. Well, the project is located on the existing seawall. All work is proposed is to be located upon that seawall. Conditions have been added to this project. Conditions in your conditions part. Conditions seven, eight, and 11, all address the concerns as far as the removal of vegetation as well as any type of grading. They will permit, once they revise the grading, there probably will not be that significant amount of grading because it'll just be for creation of the foundation of the single-family residence. And we don't know what that grading is going to be, since we don't have building plans or grading plans for this at this point in time. But upon the submittal of those plans, there would be a condition that'd be added that we require that all off-site runoff does not exceed towards, run towards the seawall and over into Clear Lake, as well as treating the surfaced areas with some bare areas with grass or so to treat, so runoff doesn't impact the lake. And the project, the next issue comes up from shoreline development also requires, looks at the fact that the property is Zoned R5 Resort Residential. And R5 doesn't allow single-family dwellings as permitted uses. Now, under the R5, it allows uses in the R2 and R3 zoning district with use permits, those permitted uses. And under the criteria, we look at the size of the property. Under the R5 zoning district, we would look at, is the property large enough for a resort or a high-density residential? Now, the property is Zoned, or the property has .492 acres, which sounds like a significant amount of land. However, the majority of this property is underwater in Clear Lake itself. So there's just a small sliver of land that would be developable and would not lend itself to developing either high-density residential or resort. On this property, there is some development limitations, like I stated earlier. The property is designated under the general plan as residential and designated zoning as R5 High Density Residential. And we are looking at this property as well as other properties throughout the city for the consistency within the general plan or zoning. This area has been significantly developed with residential homes over the years. There are very limited opportunities for resort residential in that particular area. I think there's, across the street, I believe there's only one, a mobile home park, or used to be probably an RV park, that has been made somewhat of a transration to a living situation. Anyway, so we were focusing on, you know, one option is to wait till we change the R5 to residential R1. The other is do this use permit. Under the criteria, the use permit, there's three findings that have to be made. That the proposed location and use is consistent with objectives of this ordinance and purposes of the district in which the site is located. That the proposed location and use of the proposed conditions under which it would be operated or maintained will be consistent with the general plan. Will not be detrimental to health, safety, welfare of persons residing adjacent in neighborhood in such use. And will not be detrimental to the properties or improvements in the vicinity of the general welfare of the city. Finding number three, the third finding is that the proposed use will comply with the provisions of this title. So basically, I think we're looking at the fact that probably the highest and best use of this property is a single-family dwelling for the property. As part of this project, the project was submitted to us where the project applicant wanted to keep the six-foot wall. As I stated earlier, that six-foot wall was approved by the planning commission in September of 2012. Basically, I think if staff would have looked at the application that was vacant, staff would probably have recommended denial of the six-foot fence at this point in time. However, staff's hands are kind of tied with the previous approval. Staff did have some concerns with this six-foot fence due to the fact that we're kind of converting this property to vacant and building a single-family residence in the property, which is intensifying the egress and egress of the property. From what staff has looked at, this ingress and egress would be used by two single-family residences, the one at 2502 and 2468. So under the engineering transportation study, a single-family dwelling generates about 10 trips per day. Now, a quick summary of how this works out is, it's not they go out and in 10 times. They'll go out, go to the store, go to the school, go to the work, come home. So that's four or five trips. So we can basically imagine that there'll be egress and egress of four to eight trips per day going through this gate. So staff had some concerns about the site visibility. Staff worked with the applicant, kind of came up with somewhat of a compromise for using a three-foot wood fence and three-foot hogwire to kind of eliminate that wall in feeling along Lake Shore Boulevard. Now, this would only be for 2468 Lake Shore. It would not include the 2502 portion of the property. This is not, 2502 is not a part of this application at this point in time. So we cannot impact or require any changes to 2502. In addition to that, staff had some significant concerns with the gate for the property. Currently, it's a manual gate. Basically, you're stopping on Lake Shore Boulevard. It's a pretty significantly busy roadway. There's some kind of concerns, like as one of the findings for a gate or fence is that it does not create a sight distance standard or substantial hazard. While stopping at Lake Shore Boulevard and opening a gate has some potential significant impacts. If you look at, as part of your condition, condition number five, staff came up with three options. One is for the gate to be set back to allow vehicles to get off the roadway. Some of the practicality of this, once you move it back, you're almost running into the house with a 15-foot setback. So staff created some other options. One is to put electric gate on, so it automatically opens up. It doesn't require people stopping or closing the gate or something of that nature, as well as the option of no gate. And once again, we get to the criteria, findings and evidence here for fences. Basically, there's significant criteria, there's standard criterias for that. And basically, it's like the fence shall not create a substantial hazard to the public by creating a reduced visibility or there's sight distance problems. With the hogwire kind of reduce that down. The next finding, the fence shall be aesthetically pleasing and not create inappropriate wall-in effect, visual barrier, or result in public safety problem. With the hogwire, you know, we've seen examples of the hogwire fence, and it looks relatively aesthetically pleasing, as well it doesn't create that visual barrier as a six-foot wall-in effect. And so stepping also on the part of this project, condition number five is the project applicant will be required to put in curb gutters and sidewalks as per the city's standards for this property. Under the project, a single-family dwelling is used primarily categorically exempt, like I said, once we moved it back from the seawall, it basically reduced, well, eliminated all the issues associated with fishing game as well as the county. So there's, like I said, staff, a single-family dwelling is categorically exempt under 15303C or, I'm sorry, A of the SEQU guidelines. And staff would note that we did receive a letter of objection from a neighbor who had concerns, it's in your packet, had concerns about the six-foot fence and would, I guess he was using the argument that the justification for the original fence was to hide the junk on the property. And taking away from the scenic view, his recommendation is that there be no fence along Lake Shore Boulevard. And staff would also, before we, if, as part of the resolution, there is a typo error on the three findings at the end there. For the shoreline development permit in particular, there should read 2468 Lake Shore Boulevard rather than 350 North Main Street. At this time, staff recommends the planning commission approve the shoreline development permit, use permit, and fence permit application subject to the conditions of approval as set forth in your report in the attachment page connected to the staff presentation.
Thank you, Dan. Okay. Who wants to start? Questions for staff?
Did you say that because it's a single-family dwelling, there's no wood in sidewalks or curb gutters?
No, they do have wood in the sidewalks. That's a conditional approval for any new single-family dwelling in City of Lake Park.
Yeah, I know I had to.
Just checking.
And so basically, the fence area, they're going to take the six-foot part down that's on the front, put a hogwire fence, so it's going to be half-six foot and half-hogwire?
No, half, three feet of residential fence at the bottom and three feet of hogwire above that. So six-foot fence, basically.
But the property next door, it's going to still have the solid system?
Yes, yes.
So I have a question about that. Originally, because you know how to take my notes, originally in the conversation --
On the approval.
On the approval, it was for both addresses. Six-foot fence for 2468 and 2502 Lake Shore Boulevard.
Yes.
So it was all one continuous fence. At the time, the applicant indicated that they intended it to be obviously temporary because when it was going to be developed, they were going to put in an architectural fence. It was going to be the full length, and it was going to be very nice, and it's going to be, you know, a really attractive fence. And so that six-foot fence from one end to the other was going to be removed and an architectural was going to be put in. So when you say that 2502 is not to be affected, that's not exactly how it was presented at the time.
Well, we can only go by what the findings and the conditions of approval were based on that original. It didn't include, you know, it basically did include both properties, but there was no condition that they be tied together. You know, well, it was for a fence at that time. This application before the planning commission tonight is for 2468. Now, the applicant owns both properties, and you might be able to, you know, discuss it, but --
I'd also note, Walt, Dan, and I did look very carefully at those, at those previous conditions, I think their fence, application 12-01. None of the conditions in there provide us any ability to go in and change that. They, I'm not going to doubt that that was discussed at the hearing, but as far as the conditions that were approved, there were no conditions that were placed on that permit stating that at such time, if a single-family dwelling were developed, that the fence be, you know, changed. So I don't see any way that feasibility can, feasibility, feasibility can go about requiring them to remove that portion or make any changes to that portion of the fence on the other half of the property, not subject here. We certainly have control over the aesthetics and look of the portion of fence that is associated with this application, but the way that that permit's set up, I'm not going to doubt that it was discussed in 2012, but it doesn't show up in the condition as a means of amending it. So our hands are a little tied on that aspect of it.
Well, I think the general impression that I had at the time was that it was the entire fence, as that was the discussion. Or else if it was just strictly for 2502, it would have been from this point to this point, and the rest would have been vacant. But the idea was that they wanted to block off the fence between the, I guess, the Alano Club or whatever Anthony's restaurant is now, from, so they would have privacy for the entire section, even though they only had a residence at the 2502. So they wanted to put in an entire fence, one down, the other tied together. Now, is my recollection incorrect in this? Does anybody else remember this conversation?
No, it was because the trailer park across the street as well, and just privacy. But I also got the impression that it was supposed to be temporary, because I would not have approved it had I realized or thought that it was not going to be --
Well, what I remember is that they said they were going to erect the fence from one end to the other, knowing that they were going to take it down in the future. They wanted to make it nice now, but they were going to take it down in the future and make it architectural, the entire thing, because they wanted to develop and they wanted to have a nice home, because there were the nice homes on the, in that section, and so on and so forth. And now what I'm hearing is that it's going to be a nice architectural fence up to a certain point, and then we're going to have a six-foot board fence covering, with one entryway covering both residences. That's also correct, right?
Yes.
Okay. So right there, I'm thinking that that entire fence should be one architectural style, whatever it is. If you have one entrance for two homes, you don't have two separate entrances.
Right. Yeah.
So, and that goes to, and why this comes up is because of what you were talking about, the traffic aspect of it, and having the ability to get in and out with boats. That was also a conversation we talked about with boats at the time. And so if you have about one portion of fence, 2502, not at a three-foot level and visible, what you've created then is a blind spot looking north because of that entryway, whereas looking south, you have that three-foot opening with hogwire looking out. So not only is it inconsistent in the architectural design, it's also questionable as to whether or not the view looking north is impeded by that remaining fence, if not removed and replaced with that design. So I'm asking, I guess I'm asking a question. Has anybody looked into, if you were standing within property, what the impediment would be visually looking north to traffic?
Well, the impediment would be the same as it is just now. I mean, there's the six-foot fence that was approved for this property, and the planning commission and staff made a recommendation.
But that was for one residence, not for two.
That was for two residents.
No, it was for, it was for 2502 because the other --
Twenty-five, the two projects came in together simultaneously for a fence, 2468 and 2502 in 2012. They were approved for one fence going along that distance.
Right.
Now, at this point in time, the application before the planning commission right now is for 2468.
I understand that. My contention is, at the time, it was for both properties. And therefore, that was the understanding of the entirety of the fence to begin with, and that the entirety of the fence would be affected when and if development was to occur.
And we're somewhat limited on, Kevin's passing around the conditions of approval. We're just kind of limited to what we can or cannot --
I have, I have.
It does reflect what was discussed.
Just for the record, what I passed out here is the approval letter for the fence variance 12-01. So you'll see in there, conditions one, two, and three. I mean, this reflects what was approved.
Right.
And I don't see any reference to it being connected to future construction or giving us any ability.
Well, that was the conversation that the applicants had with the panel at the time. You weren't, you weren't here at the time, and so you're, unfortunately, you weren't.
Shooting time.
Yeah, you don't remember or probably aren't privy to the conversation.
But even if I was, I don't think that it would change too much of what our ability would be to do. We can only enforce the approved conditions.
I understand that. I'm just making the point that the understanding at the time, I believe, and again, if I'm to be corrected, please do so, panel, I believe that the intent was understood that the entirety of the fence would be altered at the time of construction or renovation or development. Now, if I'm mistaken, that somebody please refresh my memory.
At the time, was there a residence already on the other property?
Yes.
Just one.
And they made an addition, two-story addition. There used to be a trailer there, and I guess maybe it still is, but there was an addition placed in the front part of it. And so they came before the commission and said, here's what we want to do with this property in the future. We would like to develop it. And, but we have an issue with next door and visual and privacy, and what we'd like to do is put in this fence and from one end to the other. And when it's come, when it's time for us to actually do our construction and submit our plans, we will make a nice fence, architectural is what it said. There were concerns about the wall-in effect at the time. They did indicate by my notes that they were open to the fact that they knew that it was not to be walled in, and that they would put up a really nice fence, the entire length of it. Now, if that's changed, that's changed. We can speak to the applicants about that.
Yeah, I think --
But I'm looking at strictly, you know, from the original intent of what the entirety of the fence is, from my standpoint, I was under the assumption that it was the entirety of it, and not just one portion. of it, and not just one portion. Doesn't make sense to me that it's just one portion. So, that's why I'm asking, if my recollection is not correct.
It's, it's tough, because I read through the staff report, too, at that time, and it doesn't reference anything in regards to a temporary, you know...
No, that was the applicant's, that was the applicant's conversation with us, was that they wanted to put up a fence, we asked them if it was going to be a nice fence, they said, yes, this is what we're going to build, this is how we're going to do it. And they said, at the time, that, you know, when and if we get to develop it, we will remove this fence and replace this fence with an architecturally appropriate design for what we have here now. And so we said, okay, that's great, because we understood they needed privacy, but it was our understanding, at least it was mine, clearly.
And we can certainly, when the applicants come up, we can have a discussion and see if they're amenable to something like that, but as, as your representative to your body, I don't see a way that we could force that upon them, given the conditions that were approved, because those are the official record, those are the official items that we, that we kind of regulate here forward on that fence. So I'm not sure how we would, what our ticket would be to require them to upgrade that fence, or make, make amends to that.
Absolutely.
Okay. The original question on this, the reason for this fence, the six-foot fence, was to get privacy, and you need privacy. You're not going to have any privacy with a three-foot fence with hog wire, it's going to be wide open. You're going to be three feet and then completely visible.
Well, okay, before, before, make sure you don't address the applicants yet, because it's not an open session, so if you want to address the staff...
The situation, there would be eliminating the original reason for the six-foot fence that we approved, okay. Now, if those setbacks were done properly, and the fence was moved back 10 feet from the sidewalk, then the applicant could have a six-foot fence?
Fifteen feet.
Is it fifteen now?
Fifteen feet for our, our five.
Oh, our five, I was going to say.
Well, that's a whole different sticky situation, and we'll deal with this, right?
Okay, so I'm just saying that that would eliminate that issue, and you could still, the applicant could retain the privacy element, which I certainly would want if I was living across from a trailer park.
I believe the house is, the house is, I think, 20 feet from the front yard setback, so 15-foot setback would be five feet from the garage, which would make the whole property unusable.
It looked like it was more than that to me, to hit to the garage. It would eliminate, it would eliminate a good portion. But from a standpoint of the visibility aspect that the chair was bringing up, I don't see a problem from the north side, but I certainly do see a side, do see a problem from the south side.
Well, one of the resolutions of a privacy is, there's going to be a house, and there will be an east side of the house, but there will be a...
No, I'm talking visibility, I switched tracks there, from a visibility and blocking of oncoming traffic, because that's a, you're coming around a curve, and those people are really trucking going around that curve, because I was walking it myself this morning, and it's, it's pretty speedy there, especially when the two little chihuahuas ran out in the middle of the street, and I'd have to wave my cane, my cane to stop the traffic from hitting them. So, anyway, that was, that's that. I just, I just think there's a visibility issue, there's a number of issues that need to be addressed. Thank you.
For me, is there any kind of easement that's needed to use one gate on one parcel for both homes?
Well, that would be, that would be between the property owner, right now, the property owner...
Yeah, they're owned by the same person, but now we're doubling...
Two residents.
Two residents, so we've got a double use coming out of that one gate.
Well, that'd be, like, like I was saying earlier, it's 20, 10, actually 20 trips, so the trips actually would be going in and out, probably be in the neighborhood somewhere between four and eight times a day, and, you know, that is a potential hazard, and that's why we had concerns about the existing gate.
Yeah, because it's, and it's not going to be, it's easy to get in either, because you haven't got as much room as there is right now to maneuver once you get through the gate.
Yeah, yeah. No, I mean, it's not, it's not, you know, that's gate.
It's got some issues.
In all probability, if there wasn't a fence there now, we would probably be recommending denial of any type of fence over three behind. I mean, that's, it's just along the lake, it's a busy, I, you know, we're trying to keep, open areas not walled in, and when you talk about walled in, it's along Lake Shore Boulevard, too, as well as on the property. And, you know, there's, there's, this gate fence is a challenge, it's been something we've been wrestling with.
So is there anything on the books that requires a separate entrance per residence?
Generally not. I mean, you can, you can have shared, shared driveways, I mean, that usually butt right up against each other. If a portion of that driveway was completely on another property and then went through, would someone have to access it? Yes, you would need an easement, but in this case, you've got a property owner that owns the property, and you can't dedicate an easement to yourself.
So what happens when the property owner decides they want to sell one?
Well, in this case, is it...
Well, if they sell the property, they would have to create an easement, or, you know, for the property.
Yeah.
Can't afford them to do that for the sale of the property, because nobody's going to...
Otherwise, there's no access to the house. Or alternatively, they would need to get a new encroachment permit, provide a new driveway.
Staff, please tell me how, if I'm looking at this incorrectly, from the pictures, from the drawings, it looks to me like this dwelling is going to be 55 feet wide. Am I seeing, is it, is it that wide?
I believe it was 55 feet wide, yeah.
And how does one do that on a 36.5-inch lot?
Thirty-five foot lot?
Thirty-six point five inch, is what I got.
All right, what are you, oh, okay. Well, it's okay, so, well, here's the C-wall, this is the Lake Shore Boulevard, so the 55 feet is from this point over this way. It's on, the 55 feet is on the lake side.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Right, and so there's a 36-foot gap between the street and the corner of the house. Right next door to it is where the other house is. So this is all, this is all open in here, and this is right on the wall. Yeah, but that's open, this is open, this is all, this is the house down here.
I see now, and this is, oh, this is actual, okay. Okay, but still, I'm still looking at 36.
Yeah, no, if you, if you looked at it, if you, if you refer to, if you refer to page two in the staff report, it's got the site plan on it, it shows the width of that lot being 81.5.
I got it. I thought that picture was for the existing house, excuse me, never mind, okay.
There's 10-foot side, side, or setback, which is a standard setback for our five.
So, I have a, anybody else have a question? I have a question regarding the, the flat map. The flat map is provided for, obviously for the Rumsey, but in looking at it and seeing that there was one, one monument on there, I got a little curious, because it said on there, this map does not constitute a boundary line survey. So, I called Michael and talked to him, and he indicated that they actually did record a surveyed map.
Correct.
And so my question is, when you received your plans, and it obviously had the monuments on there, did you calculate the setbacks from those monuments to determine whether or not the applicant was in compliance?
Say it again?
Based upon the monuments, did you calculate the setback for the fence design that's been given, based upon the boundary line?
For the fence itself? No, no. Basically, when they do the layout of the sidewalk and the curb gutter and sidewalk, they may have to remove that fence, I'm not sure, but...
Well, is that what we're sort of talking about right now? Because they gave us drawings showing us a fence right along Lake Shore Boulevard, but if you don't know where it's at by plan, that's why I'm asking, did you get plans that showed the intent of the fence?
Well, they just identified the fence at the point.
The fence cannot be located anywhere in the, beyond the property.
I understand that, so again, my question is, if you have the monuments, and you know where they're at on the street based upon the plans that you received, did you look at the monuments and calculate the setback, and then look at the plans that they provided and say, the fence belongs exactly where they say it is? Did you do that?
No, there wouldn't really be a need to, when the, the only spot that they can put it is on their property. It cannot go any further than their property line. I mean, they can't set it out within the right-of-way of Lake Shore Boulevard.
I understand that, so the, so the drawing that we were given, this drawing that we were given with dimensions on there is arbitrary at this point. You didn't verify this?
For the fence?
Yeah.
Yeah, they might have to move it, they might have to move back, there's no setback requirements for a fence.
Well, doesn't that have something to do with what we're talking about right this moment, about the location of the fence and the removal of the fence and redesign of the fence?
Well, we're talking about a fence in the front yard setback, like 15-foot setback, whether it's, whether it's 15 feet from the house, or 16 feet from the house, or 25 feet from the house, I think, irrelevant, as long as it's not in our right-of-way, and we're going to make sure that it's not in our right-of-way, as part of the original of the building plans.
Because when their, when their plans, their curb gutter and sidewalk are going to be built right up to that property, I mean, they're going to have to, if that fence is out there existing, it's going to have to move, and they would need to construct the new fence at the property.
Well, let me ask you this, to be fair, on this drawing, it shows 22 feet from the south, southwest corner of the home to the property line.
Right.
Did you verify that, that distance?
Say it again.
Okay. On this particular map that they provided, right here, okay, the southwest corner, which would be the closest corner, south, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, it shows 22 feet from the corner to Lake Shore Boulevard, or what would be, I guess, current fence line. Did you validate or verify that distance on the plans that you received, based upon the monuments?
No, we wouldn't need to validate that until a building permit, when they, their first inspection is going to be a setback inspection, and our building official would verify that, that it's built there to plans. Prior to them getting a building permit application, Dan or myself would review it to make sure that whatever building plans they submitted meet that 22-foot setback. That would be what we...
We're requiring a 22-foot setback, 22-foot setback at that location for this project. If building plans come in, and they don't meet that, then they may have to shrink up the house or make it narrower. I mean, they have to meet our standards.
You're saying there's a 22-foot?
That's what they're showing.
No, that's what they're showing.
No, they're showing 22 feet from their point.
But in all honesty, if they came in, if they came in with plans that showed it slightly different than this, but still within the front yard setback, it would still be, it still would be a valid permit.
So, what is a valid front yard setback?
Well, the front yard setback would be 15 feet for the house and 20 feet for the garage. And staff normally never goes out and measures setbacks for, for projects of this nature. I mean...
Not, not for a single-family dwelling, I mean, the use permit is...
Normally, well, I would, normally I would agree with you, and I know that you're right, but this is on Lake Shore Boulevard, which is really busy, and it's, and it's not like you're going up Knight Street, so I think it's a little bit different.
And, yeah, concerning what, the house or the fence?
Well, the fence.
Okay.
Okay. So your, your suggestion would be to maybe have it setback even further than just...
No, I'm just looking for verification as to whether or not the plans that were submitted are going to be, are going to be close to accurate or not, and, and because of the fact that the original idea of the fence that is now, being at six feet and being redesigned, when it gets put back in, that it's in the right location, why I say that is because originally, this fence was put in by site.
Yeah.
The, the...
The previous CDD said the power poles were a good indication, which we know isn't true. And so when Michael did the survey, he actually found the monuments, and so where the fence is now may or may not be accurate.
Well, I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
There's a 35-foot setback from the center of Lake Shore Boulevard, which is probably the standard roadway width for that particular area. Now, we're going to assume that that's correct, and that would include the right-of-way for the curb gutter and sidewalk.
Well, as, as a means of maybe trying to kind of compromise a staff agreement, you know, I think staff, and you can ask the developer, the applicant, if they're amenable to some, maybe adjusting the condition language, if it's something the commission's concerned about, we can put in there specifically that prior to any, you know, relocation of the fence or, you know, changes to the fence, that a site visit be conducted to ensure that it's matched up to the existing property line. I mean, if that's, if that's a concern of the commission, we can make sure to put that, so it's, it's locked into the conditions, that prior to any changes to this fence, which would be required, that there be a site visit, you know, those monuments uncovered and verified, you know, just like you would do your first inspection for a single-family dwelling, you are required to string out the property lines and show the location, you know, the actual setbacks for a building. I'd be amenable to that, to ensure that, you know, this is located specifically no further than the property line, to make sure that there's no encroachment of the property. They're going to need to do that anyways with the curb gutter and sidewalk.
Right, and, and it's because of the original location of the fence not being known exactly where the monuments were.
But if it's, if it's a concern of the commission, I, I would be amenable, you'd have to talk with the, with the applicant when they come up, and work out any language on there, but I would be amenable to, you know, adjusting one of those condition languages to make sure that, that that does happen prior to any of these required changes.
Now, the location of the curb gutter and sidewalk is a precise location that would be determined by our city engineer for it, and, you know, any fence will have to be behind that, according to our business.
Any questions? Other staff, please? I only have one other question for staff regarding the total height of the structure. My assumption, well, I guess I'm looking for clarification, but the best way to put this, I have 1707060H, this maximum height is 25 feet, but 26 feet, based upon Rumsey and such and such, and it shows the house at 25 feet, but there's a detail on the top of it that extends beyond that 25 feet. So, what is the maximum height, the code of this location?
15% I think.
Yeah, usually the height is probably the primary structure.
But the zoning ordinance, I believe, does have a, have a notation in there that, you know, those other cupolas or...
It says 26 feet above 12.79 Rumsey, so you're allowed 26 feet if it's above 20, above 12, about Rumsey. This is a setback.
The Rumsey's separate from the height of the building, because there's a C-wall there, and the C-wall, basically, everything on the other, one side of the C-wall is at the Rumsey 7.79, but this house will be located on existing fill on the particular property behind the C-wall.
Sure, sure, so, so the height of the, of the building is listed at 25 feet, that I see a pergola or some sort of detail on there that raises it, I don't know how many feet, so my question is, does that affect the maximum height of the building, based upon the zone?
Yeah, that's a, that's a special...
Something, yeah.
Yeah, usually I think it's like a...
Oh, there you go.
It can't exceed more than 15%, I think, is usually, let me verify that.
Something, I just, yeah, I just, I couldn't find it here, so that's why I'm asking. Well, let me just do this, let me just ask staff if they're comfortable with the design meeting criteria based upon the zone that they're requesting.
Yeah, we're, with the primary, the roof height elevation and the roof line. Yeah, we're, with the primary, the roof height elevation and the roof line.
Are there any further questions of staff?
No.
Okay. So at this time, what we'll do is we'll open this up to the public.
Yeah, it's to the highest point of the average level, the average level of structure, so.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, we'll open up a public hearing on this matter. If the applicant would like to come forward, any other public, come forward and speak to the issues. That'd be great.
First of all, we would like to thank Dan Chen and Kevin.
I'm sorry, can you state your name for the record?
Yes, thank you. I'm Cindy Shul.
Yes, Shul.
Thank you. We'd like to thank Dan Chen and Kevin for their review of our proposal and their help in identifying issues with the original plan you submitted and assisting us by suggesting possible solutions for those issues and presenting our proposal tonight. We'd also like to thank everybody else that was involved in reviewing our proposal and offering feedback to the city with potential areas of concern we've noticed. And we'd also like to thank you, the planning commission, for putting us on the agenda and taking your time to review our proposal. Regarding the fence.
We would be willing to make the fence look like this.
It's three feet wood and a hot work.
Six feet, all the way, on both properties. And put in two electric gates.
One for twenty-five oh two and the other for twenty-four sixty, which would solve the biggest problem for both properties.
With that, if we just took the existing gate, the existing fence and made it look like this, would this be okay with you guys?
Well, we can discuss that and get a consensus of it, but your presentation is reasonable, so we'll take that under advisement, certainly.
We agree with the project conditions. The report was all written, thank you, Dan. I think, is there anything else that there were questions regarding?
Well, maybe, maybe there are more than just the fence. We were sort of discussing that with the staff, but if any of the commission, what you presented to us, if you're ready, then if anybody has any questions regarding any of the project, then this would be the time to address that.
So we said electric gates, we said three foot fence, blah, blah. I think we've addressed the concerns. We did originally want to deck overlooking the lake with pileings in the lake, but Dan was very clear he got to think that, that that wasn't gonna be easy, so we had a feeling. If you have any other questions, we'd be happy to address them.
Thank you. So I'll open it up to the commission. Any questions from the applicants?
I have something concerning the electric gates. I'm assuming you'll have visitors?
Yes.
So to me, electric gates aren't gonna work unless it's on a code or something. And I don't know how you would be able to supply people with your...
Yeah.
Dealing, you know? So that doesn't make sense to me at all, and especially with no setbacks. And that's, that's my big, big aboo because I was here and we approved it and we remember you discussing this as being, this fence as being temporary. Do you recall that?
Well, I remember coming in here for the variance and it was going to be tempered, it was going to be stained wood.
Right.
And it was gonna look nice.
We're gonna take it down to make a better fence.
Yeah, right.
We're gonna do that.
But we're concerned about the setbacks and I was, that's pretty, that's pretty fast through there. And, and there's just no place for anybody with a boat or a car or anything. There's, there's very little space there to pull over and not interfere with traffic by turning and aiming into the, into the fence, into the gate. That's what my main concern is.
You mean for us with the boats or...
Anybody, coming to visit you.
We have a boat dock and everything. We don't just take the boat out of there.
Okay, and nobody comes to visit you with any kind of trailer or anything?
No. But maybe we could leave one of the, no fence, no gate on one of the openings.
No fence, no gate?
No fence, but no gate, like just open in one of them. So one of them would be, you can just drive in with no gate.
You wanna stay exposed that much?
I don't want to. I'm just trying to work things out.
Yeah, I get that, but do you see our point about the setbacks?
Yes.
But going in, like, what is the setback, fifteen feet?
Fifteen, and I'm wondering if we can't compromise on that, if it's gonna be a single-family, there's a different...
You're doing a fence exception.
I know.
You could do...
So we can?
Yeah.
We can do, we could. I'm just thinking since it's going from resort, R5.
If you move it back ten, you know, a vehicle...
It's not going to R5, it's a used permit within R5 at this point.
But it's going to be for a single-family and single-family requirements are different than fifteen.
The challenge that comes up is usually a car is fifteen feet long or ten feet long. So when you start pulling it back ten feet, you're basically putting the fence very close to the house, making it very impractical to back a boat up or something of that nature, making it impossible to back a boat up.
Well, it looks like there's plenty of room to me, but that's all relative, you know?
Well, I mean, a lot of that room that's there is our city right of way. You know, it's like, and we're trying to get them off of our city right of way by, you know, having it so the gate's either gone, opens electrical or do some kind of thing. And, you know, that's the challenge about having that setback issue. It does create its own conflict with their operating of their property.
Okay, so, I'm not, I'm not gonna guess, but I'm going to say that there are numerous designs for electric gates that don't require key codes or, yeah, there are...
So we're good on that?
There are sliders, there's all kinds of things that you can find that, you know, you put them on a keychain, you drive up, you click and it just, it doesn't sting. So I think what you're thinking of is somebody actually stopping and trying to get access to the electric gate. I don't think that's necessarily...
I'm thinking guests.
Well, even if they're guests, they would probably have... There are apps and stuff now with fences, so I think in electric fence, there's a lot more ways of doing it now than just the standard.
Okay, okay, I'll let that one go. But, yeah, no, and I would want one too. I just didn't realize. I should have asked Harold.
Like his fence designed, he has there, they have a mechanism that you can use a fence panel like, similar to what he's got. And what it does, it works on a rail and it pops over and it slides and it goes back. And it's all on electric thing. You do it with it, it's like a garage door controller.
Right, right.
It costs a little bit of money, but it doesn't have to swing out, it doesn't, it doesn't take up six inches of space. It pops and rolls back.
I wasn't thinking of swinging. No, I know it really goes sideways. I'm just thinking, who's gonna have those little...
Well, that's, that's for them to...
That's for them to worry about, yeah.
It's whether or not it works or not is our, is our problem.
Mr. Chair, just if I can ask the applicant, just a quick clarification. In regards to your existing approved fence, what is, what kind of gate is there or is that...
You know, it's on hinges. We just open it and leave it open and we come and go and then we just close it when we're done.
Yeah, it swings back though.
Yeah, it swings back. It swings in, yeah.
Well, yeah.
Away from, away from the road, yes. There is no room to go out. So are you folks amenable to giving us some setback there on, on something that we approved and under misunderstanding what you were going to do?
What do you mean setback?
The setback, moving that fence back.
Well, do we need to do that?
Well, okay, so timeout.
Okay.
If, if in fact, and we haven't got there yet, but just for the sake of argument, let's say that by consensus, we come up with a condition that allows the fence to be where proposed with two electric gates for the two properties, full length as we're talking about.
Yeah.
Then you wouldn't require a setback at that point because you have, you have gates that are, two gates that will open wide completely.
Uh-huh.
So that would be in conformance. Now, if you're looking for setbacks based upon the possibility of longer than twelve-foot vehicles like trailers and such, well...
Any gate at all?
Well, gates are twelve feet wide then, so there's gonna be two of those.
Or in other words, you're looking at sideways.
Well, there's two access points.
Eighteen foot?
Yes.
Eighteen or twenty?
Right.
Eighteen to twenty?
Right.
That's plenty.
So that's two cars.
Yeah, okay.
So I'm not trying to speak for you, but I'm just, I'm just saying that, you know, the setback necessarily wouldn't be required if there's an ability for the access to be wide enough to get in and out without conflict. If it was just a small gate, you'd probably have a problem, you'd have to go back in. But if it's a wide enough gate and it's designed properly, you'd probably be okay.
And if it's the hot wire and...
Right, right.
There's no blockage.
Right.
But for the new property, there is requirements for setbacks.
There's like the what?
No.
For the new property?
No, no, let's fix it.
Why is it exempt?
It's not exempt.
We've already...
It's not exempt, but it's not required.
Really?
Well, he's not, right now the property's not anything there.
No, well, there is...
And when they do a building permit, they do drawings and then when that's issued, they're gonna measure and then they're gonna find out if there's gonna have to be a setback.
Okay, well, I agree with that.
They'll have to make modifications.
It just has to be on the, on the property.
Right, it has to be on their property. Which will be...
In the distance from the building.
And then just say for the sake of argument, they discover that their modification is going to be more than anticipated. Well, then they would make a decision as to what to do with the structure. The fence will be the fence based upon the lines that are drawn by monuments. So that's, that's gonna be a set known factor.
Okay, but to say there's, there's no setbacks is, to me, new news.
The setbacks is for the house.
The house.
The house needs a setback, so the R5.
Right, not the fence.
Or it's not the fence, because the fence is, that's what's before the planning commission, the fence permit. A fence in excess of three feet in the front yard setback.
Right, that's why I asked the question about the twenty-two feet. Because if they know that it's going to be in conflict now, now would be the time to address it, but...
Well, there's three feet, you get, you don't have to. I get that, but it's gonna be visible above that, so. Okay, all right, I'll let it go.
Any questions?
On that? No.
Fence, okay. There are other things other than the fence. Do you have any questions regarding? You know, we did get a letter from somebody objecting to the Walden effect. But looking at the plan, it's a pretty big house and it takes up pretty much all of the land there. So is there any, is there any view from Lake Shore Boulevard to the lake?
No.
Once this gets built, or is it gonna be just that little sliver between the...
There's no view now, there's no view now.
Right.
There probably won't be any view either. You know, a little bit on the sides.
There is a ten-foot setback on each side, so there'd be twenty feet of view to the lake, but there is a...
And if you're, if they're amenable and gonna be adjusting the fence on the other side too, I mean, there's setbacks for the house, so...
I address this question on behalf of the person who sent the letter because they're concerned about the Walden effect. So I'd like to be on the record as to, so that they understand that they asked, you know, what's happening and what's it gonna look like? And so, and so we know that there's a ten-foot space between properties and that the house will probably take up all of the, of the land. So that way the question will be answered for them, so that's why I brought that up.
And being, being a, it's gonna be a three-foot Boulevard fence, they'll be able to see parts that they can't see now.
Correct, right. I do have one important question though regarding the boat ramp. I know that property really well. Are you planning on revitalizing the boat ramp? I mean, it's a nice design that you have here about incorporating.
I'm gonna try. We have to go to the engineer and stuff like that. If we can, we can. If we can, it's nice, it's good, we've been using it.
Yeah.
So I'd like to move that.
Yeah, just for clarification, the shoreline ordinance, which is administered by the county for that area, it does not permit any new private boat ramps.
Right.
However, legal non-conforming ones, which this is, I mean, they are allowed to, through a, through a proper permit through, through the county, can make, they can maintain that. They can expand. They can't, you know, but, so there, there are some parameters, but that, that will be within the county's jurisdiction in which they're aware of. They've talked with it.
Again, all, all things to be put on the record, so that's why I asked the question.
And the staff did have concerns about the boat ramp originally because basically we have a boat ramp going into a house. And we were concerned, like, staff was concerned about like potential wave action hitting the house. And we talked, we sat down with the building official, basically since the habitable areas on, all the habitable areas on the second floor. What I did say in my presentation is this is a two-story house. The first story is nothing but garages, while the second story is the habitable area. So the wave action technically would, if the worst-case scenario, the wave would go in one garage door and out the other, you know, not be a significant impact and let, well, might wash your boat away.
They, they may have a different opinion of that being a significant impact.
It's not a flood issue, it's what I was concerned about, flood damage.
Correct.
Well, I'm certain that when, when and or if this, this is approved, that the foundation will be at the proper level to deal with a hundred-year flood, because I've been here a long time and I've seen all of those places go underwater.
Big waves, major waves.
All of those.
Good reason to have the, have the layer on the second floor.
Right.
Right. I do have one more question. Am I correct in thinking, I'm not sure which side the letter came from, which side of your property, but isn't there a plot there that's vacant?
Yes.
Real vacant, not fence vacant.
There's one right next to us.
Right, so there, there's view, if, I mean, it's pretty grown up, but if anybody wants a view, it's there.
Twenty-four forty is to the south of this.
Until, until somebody wants to develop it.
Yeah, it's pretty skinny.
It's skinny.
It's pretty tiny.
I've seen some...
Yes, yeah, right. But, but in case there's objection on that side, there shouldn't be an objection because there's plenty of room there. You know, to, for view or whatever. I mean, you've got the ten-foot setback plus that property, which is, was pretty darn tiny. At first I thought that you, that's where you wanted to build the fence because I, or the building. And I'm looking at going, how can they do that? But then I realized that the fence encompassed the quote vacant area, which wasn't vacant. Or it's got stuff all over, but I got it after a while. I'd still like to see some sort of movement on that fence. If you can bring it back a little bit, that would be great. I don't think we can make you, but I'd like to see it.
I think it'd be some challenges, Kirk, I mean, because they backing a boat into the, if they're gonna use this boat ramp with the twenty-two feet, it makes it pretty challenging right off the bat to get a boat in there with the fences they, they work currently.
Right, and, you know...
Well, then it'll also block traffic.
It's one of the reasons that your neighbors to the north, the antonini's, they passed the rest of them. But that's why they didn't put a fence in because they had lots of boats and they couldn't do it. So that's why all the houses to the north are all concrete, it's a fence. That was the reasoning for that, so.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public who'd like to speak on this issue? Having seen none, I will close this portion of the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Okay. So what are your thoughts? What are your questions or? Any other, any other questions you may or may not have about this application? Yeah, I was too.
Well, I'm willing to make sure when we see us up.
So we can, I'm gonna ask one question of staff, just for clarity. But after that, we'll lead into the fence and the conditions and this kind of thing. And so that the commission, so the commission's aware, I made a request regarding the R5 use permit and R1. And the response was, was clear. R5 can have a use permit for R1 if you classify it as R3 first and then it goes to R2 and then it goes to R1. Why I bring this up is because in the housing element, when I looked at it, and of course, it's about intent, the R5 intends it to be for a specific use with modifications relative to that use. to that use, in this case resort. R3 is not resort, but it is apartments basically, and R2 is duplexes basically, but R1 is single family. And in looking in the housing element, it has a table in there as to the intent, as to what's to be brought forward, and it's Table 5-2, I have it right here, and most of the, there are three designations in this table, and X means that it's permitted, a UP is a used permit, and an R is permitted as replacement dwelling subject to use permit, replacement dwelling. Now, in the R5, there is no X, and there is no UP, which means that it's not permitted originally, and it's not by use permit for residential, but it is permitted as replacement dwelling. Now, this particular property doesn't have a dwelling, so it's not historic. So the question was, how is it squared with staff that you can go from an R5 use permit to R1 when it's not possible here? The response was that use permits based upon the R2 or R3 are valid within R5, and if you're going to allow a use permit with R2 or R3, those zones do incorporate use permits for R1 as accepted use permits. So if you have questions as to how an R5 can all of a sudden become an R1, it's a chain of events. Now, having said that, I personally will disagree with that, and I'm sure staff is correct in what they assume or what they've presented, I take that back, what they presented, because they know more than I, but when I look at the intent of the general plan and the housing elements, and I see that the R5 is listed as R and not UP, it tells me that the intent of R5 is to be as close to the intent as possible unless you want a zone change.
And?
And so, I'm bringing this to your attention so that, so if somebody asks, how did an R5 become an R1 use? You know that it was because R3 and R2 are allowed, and it's going to be R2 and R3, it allows R1.
Indimally close.
It's, to me, it's parsing hairs here, because honestly, this charts and say UP for everything, if that's the case. It should, because otherwise it wouldn't be permitted unless it's replacement.
And you're absolutely correct, I mean, this is an interpretation call, and Dan and I sat down and looked at it, because it's, we were trying to guess, well, not guess, we were running back and forth, there's a subtlety in the language that's used, the R2, I mean, it's not uncommon, you look at it, a lot of our zoning districts in uses, required with the use permit, say, also point you back to a different section, a different zoning ordinance, or it can be allowed here, but when you look at what's worded in R2, it's slightly different than any other place in the ordinance, and Dan and I looked at that very hard, and it could just be a wording mistake, but it also could be specifically for this type of situation.
It all hinges on the word permitted, you're missing.
Correct.
And it's kind of a, I think it might be an error, but, you know, that's what it says.
So, I mean, this is not the forum for it at this moment, because we've had already a discussion about non-conformance, and it's going to come back up again.
It made it to my list of things to look at, yeah.
Because of this particular area, because all of this section is listed at R5, but is also listed as residential, I understand that in Figure 3 of the general plan, it is also listed as R5. Figure 1 shows it as residential, and Figure 3 shows that it has R5 in the general plan.
In particular areas where there are R5, and it's a.
So there's a, well, my point is this, that somewhere, somehow, this particular section of Lakeport is going to have to have some sort of scrutiny and some determination, because you have four different reference points, two being residential, two being R5. It can't be that way.
And I think.
It just can't be, and so the surrounding neighborhoods and the surrounding uses are now going to start having an effect, so that's why I'm bringing this up.
And we looked at, I mean, we looked at, because, you know, the concern you have is, are we setting a dangerous precedent?
Right, that's exactly.
And the answer is no, because this property, you know, there's other areas that are zoned R5 that there's no way we would go with this pattern, because, you know, it just might not, you know, there's R5, it's R5, and it's consistent with the.
So, I mean, just for the sake of argument for 15 seconds, if the applicants came in, and let's say they were retired hotelier people, and they wanted to build a place, and they say, hey, you know, this is great, it's R5, right now we're going to build a house, you know, we've got grandkids, and we want something, and this has got lake extension, and you know, we have the capability and resources, let's raise these homes and let's put in a 50-unit place with a dock, they could, because it's R5. Now, is it likely? No, but that's what that R5 is all about, is that, that's why it has such an extension into that lake.
And the concern would be, the challenge would be, a hotel would be, there would be consistent with the general plan.
Doesn't have to be a hotel, it could be a bed and breakfast, it could be a niche.
But you'd still have issues.
See what I'm saying?
Yeah, and you're right in the same conversation that Dan and I had, I mean, it was, but at this point, regardless of its zoning, replacement of a bed and breakfast, or anything out there, we would have a hard call, you know, to make probably here in this forum, again, with it being surrounded by single-family residential uses, is that a consistent use for this area?
Well.
Yeah, no, you're.
You see, Anthony's is right across the street, Rainbow's, I mean, the historic use of it, it's not.
You're absolutely correct, the historical use of it, but currently.
Right.
Those areas are not resorts.
I bring this up for the public record, so that everybody understands what's happening here.
Even if we rezone it.
Right.
Uses, uses like a bed and breakfast is allowed in a R1 zoning district, you know.
But you wouldn't, I don't think you could take an R5, get a use permit for residential, for a single family, and then go get another use permit to make it a bed and breakfast. Why don't you just make a bed and breakfast?
If they came back three or four years from now and want to do it, I mean.
And that's where it goes to the, that's where it goes to that chart that says R and not UP, because if it was UP, you could just ask for it, you could just do it, it would already be a permitted use right off the bat. We can put in a residential right now with a use permit, we know that we can do a bed and breakfast this way, in these sections, you would actually have to go and get a use permit to change it to a 1, 2, or 3, and then get another use permit to get.
Well, no, well, say you wanted a bed and breakfast in this location, they could back, they could come back next year and want to request their bed and breakfast with a use permit.
That's what I'm saying. It's a multiple process.
Even if we rezone it to R1.
It's a multiple process, the point being is that this area is so convoluted that perhaps it ought to get cleaned up, well, any more of these happen.
Well, probably with developing this property, there's not too much left over.
But nonetheless, it's a fair point.
We'll be changing.
It will be coming back.
So, okay, so I just want to bring that forward, so everybody understands what's happening with R5 to R1, so if anybody asks, now you know.
And you'll be seeing this again, this property again.
With those inconsistencies.
In September, October.
Probably so. Okay, so I just want to bring that forward, so at this point, unless anybody wants to inject, there's a conversation on the table to have about the fence. I will open by saying that the applicants have indicated they are open to a fence design that is the entirety of the fence that's there now, promoting two entries, each having an electric access. Eighteen, well, yeah.
Or some kind of mechanism that rolls or slides.
Right, right, at least, I don't know if it was 18, 20 feet for both, but I'm sure it was 18, 20 feet for one, I don't know if both needed, but that's a discussion we can have, so that's what's on the table right now, so does anybody have any comments on that proposal or any ideas on that proposal?
Perhaps it could go on record and for the applicant to verify that it will be 18 to 20 feet.
Well, once, I think once we get to a point of consensus one way or the other, that it's a good idea, that what was presented is okay by us, we can probably get into further details to flesh out if we proceed with a condition. So I guess right now, I mean, it's a step-by-step thing, so right now, does anybody have any ideas on what was presented or any concerns?
Good idea. Two, two, yeah.
Three, three.
Okay, so, so I will ask for consensus on these three items, or these four items, excuse me, consensus that there will be a full-length fence, that that full-length fence will be three feet tall with a three, excuse me, six feet tall, three feet base, solid, three feet above hog wire as presented in design, that there will be two openings, one of which to be at least 18 to 20 feet, correct, is that right? Okay, one at least, and that's, what is it, two entries, like the fence, school line?
That W butterfly check condition over 10 up here, yeah, okay, so 18 to 20 feet.
On both.
And electrical, we don't, if we could take out the setback issue and the.
Number 10.
Well, remove it.
Well, we can make this condition in lieu of, we can replace the issue.
So, make sure, make sure I got this right, so there's full length, it's the height, it's the two fences and their, or two entries in there, like, was there anything I'm missing on that?
And there's not going to be any going through.
Correct, right, and no foliage on the fences, right, yeah.
Yeah, that's already moved in.
Okay, so can I get a consensus on that particular condition?
Yes.
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 Yes, okay, so we have a 5-0 consensus to add or modify, and in this case modification would be number 10, condition number 10, which is on page two of the recitals. Okay, so at this time, did you, now that we've got a consensus, did you want to validate with the applicant that their?
What, distance?
Well, the openings, you know, well, we've already decided that at least one needs to be 18 to 20. Do you, do you want more than that on the other one?
No, just 18 to 20 on both is what I.
On both or just one?
Both.
Both. I don't know if you need both. I think you can have a standard opening on the other one.
What's standard?
Well, the garage, whatever the garage is, 16, so I think it's already.
That's making the assumption, you're going for a dock on the second one, correct?
Yeah.
So that's making the assumption there's not going to be boats going in and out of there.
Well, just my suggestion, I'm just one commissioner, my suggestion would be to, whatever is there currently, if it's 16, if it's 14 or 16 feet, then that would be adequate, because that's the width that's already being used.
Right. Reason why it works though.
Yeah, I don't know what it is, I didn't measure it.
Well, I mean, ask the applicant, if you can stand up real quick, what, just for the record, what is the current width that is being used for the one access?
It's 20 total with two 10-foot gates.
10-foot gates, okay, thank you.
And that would be the primary interest for both, but on 2502, what would be the width, I think what they're getting at is, what would be the width you'd?
On 2502, 16 would be fine on 2502, and the other one would be 20.
Okay, great, thank you, I think that's what I understand this one. Okay, so we need to put that in the condition as to the addresses.
Can we say minimum 16 for both?
Minimum, no.
Well, my worry would be is.
I would say, well, again, it's just me, my vote would be that 16 as a minimum for both is adequate, because I know the entry distances, but that's my opinion, if you have a different opinion, please.
And I bring that up simply because, I mean, we're operating under the assumption that it's going to stay under one ownership, but if they decide to sell one of them off, they both have docks.
Right.
They both would need to be able to move both of the boats in and out of there.
Well, let's just say, let's just put a minimum, maximum, minimum 16, maximum of 20. How's that? And so it's up to their discretion as to on both, so if they want to put 16 in two places, or they want to put 20 in two places, or mix and match, it's up to them.
And you think 16's enough to get a truck and a boat in?
Yeah.
A problem?
That's the problem.
I'll bow to the boys.
No, no.
Okay, so, so, so for the appropriate record, what is, what is condition 10 going to reflect?
We've got it reflecting several different things right now. First, inform that this, the fence would apply to both properties, 2468 and 2502, requiring three-foot solid fence with a three-foot hog wire on top, allowing, yeah, one entry for each property with a minimum of 16-foot opening, requiring an electric gate. I mean, we'll clean up the language, but those are the primary pieces that would be in there. If I'm guessing, did I just say?
Gates.
Yeah, the gates.
Yeah, so, yeah, the gates, right, so it's full length, it's two entries, 16 minimum, separate three and three, and it's with the no foliage, so.
And that would replace the existing condition.
Solid 20 footer.
Right, okay. So we have that by consensus and modification, are there any other, any other questions on any of the other conditions in the recital?
Did you want to add a condition to delineate the front property with the city right of way?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, it's a normal thing, we always do anyway, but standard, but we could.
We can make sure that's in there.
I would like, I would like to have that in there.
I agree.
So that would be condition, what, 13?
And that would require a.
No, we're going to make a, we're making an additional system.
What's the wording on that?
It would require an inspection of the location of the fence prior to.
That the adjacent is the right way.
Right.
To stop in the right way.
Yeah, correct.
It's more delineating the right way, the pencil, right, so to that.
Any further concerns, questions, or comments on this item?
I, Mr. Chair, just as a formality, if it pleases the commission, I would just prefer that you bring the applicants up one more time, just to ensure that they're okay with those.
Certainly by staff request, would the applicants please come forward to address the staff's concerns?
Thank you.
Just, you heard, did you understand the changes on it, or are you guys amenable to those changes?
It's fine.
Yeah, thank you. It just saves us any potential need for going through an appeal process, if there's some sort of disagreement in that language, so, and they'll be provided a copy of this to sign in here to, prior to, but I just wanted to make sure that we had these up on their side as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, I will entertain a motion regarding this matter.
Well, this motion, we're going to break it down into each?
Yeah, you have to break it.
All four of these?
Yeah, you do, you have to break them down.
And just remember, the third one needs that correction. Or actually, the first one, Shoreline Development. So it'd be 2468, Lake Shore Boulevard, rather than 350 Main Street.
2468.
Yes.
And then also, it would probably be important to note that your fence permit approval one would also include 2502 now.
Right.
In addition to 2468 of.
With the amendments.
Yeah, and then at the end of each, well, other than the categorical exemption, you would also want to state as amended today.
End of each one.
Not the end of each one.
We should just start putting those up premises.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay, so it's just so it's clear, on the fence permit approval, there needs to be an inclusion of Lake Shore Boulevard, 2502, and that there was a condition modification to number 10, and a condition addition to number 13.
Are they all the same?
Yes, in the fence permit approval, when a motion is made, the inclusion of the location needs to be also 2502, Lake Shore Boulevard, and then project conditions, including the modification to condition 10 and the addition.
You could just say as amended.
As amended, yeah.
Okay, so do I have a motion?
Honorable Chair, I make a motion, move that the planning commission find that ST 16-01, UP 16-1-01, and F 16-02 as applied for by James and Cindy Schule is categorically exempt pursuant to Section 153. and F one-six dash zero-two is applied for by James and Cindy Schule is categorically exempt pursuant to section one-five-three-zero A of the sequel guidelines.
I have a motion from Commissioner Gainer, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second from Commissioner Taylor, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Carry unanimously. I will entertain a motion for the shoreline development permit approval.
Honorable Chair, I move that the planning commission find that the shoreline development permit applied by James and Cindy Schule on property located at three fif- three fifty north, no, that's right, I didn't, I changed it on the wrong spot, to twenty-four sixty-eight Lake Shore Boulevard, does meet the requirements of section seventeen point eight point oh zero, eight zero of the Lakeport zoning ordinance, consistent with the objectives and policies of the Lakeport general plan, and subject to the project conditions of approval, attachment B, and the findings listed in the July thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen staff report.
As amended.
As, and as amended.
Thank you, I have a motion from Commissioner Taylor, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second from Commissioner Spur, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. I will now entertain a motion for the use permit approval.
Honorable Chair, oh... Forgot what I was just saying. The use permit approval, I move that the planning commission find that the use permit for a single-family dwelling in the R five resort residential zoning district, applied for by James and Cindy Schule on property located at twenty-four sixty-eight Lake Shore Boulevard, does meet the requirements of section seventeen point two-four point oh four oh of Lakeport zoning ordinance, consistent with the objectives and policies of the Lakeport general plan, and subject to the project conditions of approval, attachment B, and with the findings listed in the July thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen staff report. Did we amend anything there?
Say as amended.
As amended, okay.
I have a first from Commissioner Russell, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Commissioner Gainer, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. I will now entertain a motion for the fence permit approval.
I move that the planning commission find that the fence permit for the six-foot fence applied for, uh, James and Carrie Schule on property located at twenty-four sixty-eight and twenty-five-oh-two, Lake Shore Boulevard, does meet the requirements of section seventeen point twenty-eight point zero-one-zero, point zero?
Oh.
Oh, I was just going to say that looks like weird zero. Of the Lakeport zoning ordinance, consistent with the objectives and policies of the Lakeport general plan, and subject to the project conditions and approval, attachment B, and with the findings listed in the July thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen staff report, as amended.
I have a motion from Commissioner Spur, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Commissioner Russell, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five-oh. Congratulations, and thank you very much for your patience.
Well, thank you very much.
Sorry for the torture.
May never want to do a single-family dwelling this time again?
Thank you very much.
Well, they could build a dwelling themselves. No problem.
Second, according to itself, yeah. Okay, moving along, this is to item six B. This is, this matter is Lake County Tribal Health recognizes A R sixteen dash oh-four. This is an application for minor architectural design review of a small project for a temporary trailer, which is located in the rear of Lake County Tribal Health building at nine-two-five Beavens Court, further described as A P N number zero-two-five dash four-sixteen dash two-three. Thank you. Dan?
Yes, uh, the item is architectural design review, sixteen oh-four, for Lake County Tribal Health. The applicant, who is actually here tonight, is Stephen Rugg. Uh, the application is for a temporary trailer for a period, not exactly three years, uh, in the rear of the Lake County Tribal Health building at nine-twenty-five Beavens Court. Basically, this, Beavens, excuse me. Uh, the trailer, the trailer located in the property, the trailer was located in the property without permits, and it was turned in as a violation. Staff went out, made a site visit, and determined that an architectural design review permit would be required. Uh, the use of this temporary trailer is for office space, associated with a special program that Tribal Health is working with, associated with behavioral health sciences, sciences, services, excuse me. And basically, this is kind of a pilot program for the, uh, Tribal Health. It's anticipated that temporary trailer is going to have about four to five office personnel. Uh, the general plan for this office, or the general plan designation for this property is office space. Uh, the zoning is professional offices, so we have kind of a consistency use, um, you know, it's kind of an allowed use on this property. However, any kind of addition that you put, remember, either a professional office area requires architectural design review. Normally, in a project of this nature, the size of it would be approved by the community development director with a simple design review, however, since this trailer was permit for place of the property without permits, staff recommended that, um, the planning commission review the project. At this time, Tribal Health is, uh, preparing a master plan for the entire vicinity or immediate area, and basically this is for multiple properties, R in Beavens Street Court. And, uh, basically, this would be a part, part that, well, would be addressed as part of the, uh, long-term future expansions. Uh, and that's, once again, we get back to that three-year temporary use here. Recently, the Tribal Health went work through the, the city for a twenty-car parking lot at nine forty-seven Beavens, Beavens Court, and, uh, that was approved by the city, uh, last July, for a two-year period. Basically, once they, uh, build this ma- or adopt this master plan of construction, the both the temporary office and the parking area would be, probably be removed or incorporated, well, the temporary trailer would be removed. And that's why it's one of the conditions of approval, we're looking at, uh, that we allow this on the site for three years. And at the end of three years, well, we, we have a multiple, or a condition that says we allow it for, uh, three years, but we also kind of want to get a yearly update of where they are. There's nothing sometimes more permanent than something temporary, so we kind of want to keep our top of it, so, uh, we don't get kind of stuck with it. The building official reviewed kind of the plans, and basically, there would be a building permit required for the electrical, running electrical to the office, however, the building wouldn't require any A D A access of that, of that nature due to the fact that they have clear, uh, A D A access in the primary building, and that meets all of the, the standards. Uh, so under the architectural design review, you have to make some findings. Basically, the findings is, the proposed project is consistent with purpose of Lake County Port zoning ordinance. Uh, the project is in substantial compliance with the design criteria. And the third finding would be the project consistent with the Lakeport general plan. Uh, like, like I stated earlier, the office use is consistent with the general plan, as, as well as the zoning. The colors basically relatively match the, uh, existing colors of the, uh, rest of the structures for the Tribal Health building. And, um, the, uh, the location of this particular trailer is kind of located in the rear of the, uh, property, so you're not having any visual, significant visual impacts on any roadways, or you really have to drive through the whole project to actually see where this is. Uh, so, basically, uh, staff would make a finding that this category exempt for the size of the structure, uh, fifteen-three-oh-three. C of the sequel guidelines would, uh, exempt any, a small office of that nature, under twenty-five-hundred square feet. This, this is probably around two hundred, two to four hundred square feet. Uh, staff recommends, planning commission approved, uh, the minor architectural design review application subject to the conditions of approval set forth in the staff report in attachment B. And that's the staff presentation.
Thank you. Questions of staff regarding this matter? Anybody?
Uh, is this thirty-six months from now, or is it from when they first put the...
It would be, well, we, we have it to the date of approval.
The date of approval, sorry.
According to this, it's twelve-one, two thousand and eight.
We, the way we have it set up right now would be the day of approval, which would be today, if, if, if your body approves it.
Three years from now.
Three years from, yeah.
And three years is the timeline because...
And just, in speaking with, with, uh, the representative from Tribal Health, that that's consistent with, uh, where they will hopefully have a, um, master plan for a larger facility, looking at, they own several pieces of property in that area, and they're looking at expanding, and that was one of the primary reasons we allowed the temporary parking on, on a neighboring property as well, to allow some overflow parking. We approved that in-house for a, a two-year period, um, because they're, they're looking at coming back with a larger, uh, larger building. They've been very successful where they're at, and, um, they, they've got plans for expansion. And so both the parking lot and this, uh, would be a temporary, that would need to be bought in permanently to any future master plan.
Okay, so the land use application stating that it goes from eleven seventeen fifteen to twelve-one eighteen, that's...
Well, that's a part of their request, we, we just standardize it with the approval process, I don't...
They've only been in there two months.
Yeah, I mean, you can, if, if...
Yeah, it's...
If, if the planning commission wants to change, they, that's completely within your, within your building.
That's close enough as far as I'm concerned. If they had been in there since December, I would have objected.
And, yeah, we, we kind of want to make a habit of, like, a temporary structure, we want to make sure that we have...
It's temporary.
You know, especially for trailers, we don't want to see, like, a proliferation around Lakeport of...
Right.
Office trailers being used as permanent.
Instead of, right. And there's a plethora of other buildings around there that look like they may or may not have met the ten-by-twelve, that we require, that you have a permit over that size. There's a lot of storage, yeah, right around that area.
On the site specifically, or on neighboring properties around?
No, just around that, that general area. When I was driving through there, I, I was astounded at how many of those little buildings there are. But they obviously need more buildings, I mean, it's, and they do have plans, according to the people I talked to, that they are going to build a much bigger facility, and they're going to need it.
So, I have a question as to why this is not A D A compliant? Because my understanding of any office space in California is that it has to be A D A compliant, even if it's temporary.
And because they're located right next to existing offices that meet all the standards, um, so there would be available area, you know, discussion with our A D A, uh, building official, who is our A D A expert here, and, uh, he basically stated that as long as they provide an existing access, they don't, you know, have to provide it for this, for their structure.
So what you're saying is that it's within proximity of an actual A D A-approved function?
Well, the whole, the whole facility is A D A accessible.
It's close.
Obviously, a hospital, and it's right adjacent to it, so...
They would have adequate locations for somebody needing those kind of services.
Yeah, and, and for the record, that our chief building official and A D A expert has been involved in this every step of the way. When, when we first did our inspection out here after receiving a, a code enforcement complaint, he was on there as well. He's reviewing all the plans coming in, he's, he's been working very directly with, uh, with the applicant, Steve Rugg, the representative from Tribal Health, so he's been very active in, in reviewing those A D A requirements, among other requirements as well.
Any other questions of staff? No. I will open this up to the public, if anyone would like to speak to this, uh, subject, including the applicant or representative thereof. Mr. Smith?
My name's Steve Rugg, and I have a tickle in my throat, so if I do a lot of clearing my throat and stuff, I apologize ahead of time. It seems to be, I was catching something or something, but... So I'm here, and I have reviewed the staff report, uh, the recommendations and conclusions. I have no issue with any of that, we have no issue with any of that. And we're happy to do the, the yearly report. Um, this was, uh, an oversight hobbly on my part. I, I thought of this as a job shop when I put it up, and, uh, our director had said, we have this elderly injury prevention program that we want to do, it's, uh, it's a short-term thing, and, uh... And can I, can we do something to kind of, uh, set up some temporary offices? So I said, yeah, we could put it right where the job shop was, and he built me a building. So I called around and I found a trailer that met the requirements and put it in, and, um, it didn't even really occur to me that it would need a permit until we went to hook the electrical. And I thought, oh, yeah, oh, we should have gotten the city. So it was, it was my fault, and I apologize for that. But, um, it's a three-year program, if we can keep the trailer there, we will. Uh, it's used to, uh, it's a pilot program, uh, these folks, uh, nobody comes to this trailer, uh, from the public. It's only the workers that work there. And they go out and they help older people with, uh, fixing up their homes with, uh, A D A accessibility, uh, types of things, bars in their bathrooms, in their showers, and ramps at their houses. Uh, there's a visual component too, where they help people with their, uh, vision, and then also with adaptive devices for mobility. So, um, that's what they do, and it's a grant-funded program, and it'll be rolled into the new facility, um, yeah, when, if we build that. Which is, that's been discussed, we have a master plan, uh, project right now, we're looking at about a twenty million dollar project. It would be a little two phases, one, three acres of land that we have up there. I've been involved with Lake County Tribal Health since, uh, nineteen ninety-nine, and been in charge of design and construction of all the buildings that are there, so, um, I do know the folks, I am part of it. And, um, I expect to be part of it, uh, in the next couple of years, but I live that long. So, um, so, you know, that's, that's where we are. Uh, if you guys decided to slap my hand and, and let's get rid of the trailer, then we'll just remove it, or do something else. So, that's what I told Kevin and Dan, came out, it's like, this isn't, this isn't a life-or-death thing, this isn't something where, uh, you know, I want to ruin our relationship with the city over, so, um, it's an oversight, let's keep the trailer there, we'll use it for the intended purposes, they can say, take it out, just take it out. This is true.
Well, right now, it's kind of hidden.
Yeah, you can't, right?
It's behind the maintenance, uh...
And we only have one other little building on that property, by the way.
Well, I've saw lots of them.
No, not on our property.
Oh, they're not on your property?
Uh, the city, I mean, the county environmental health has a bunch of little buildings.
Yeah.
Public health has a whole bunch of little buildings.
Well, maybe I've talked to that guy.
We have, we have one small building that's used for emergency gear.
Okay.
Has, uh, body bags and other things in it, basic emergencies, and when it's a national emergency requirement, homeland security deals.
Yeah.
And so all that stuff is in that little shed. There's only a little shed.
Okay. What is temporary to you?
For the trailer?
Yes.
Well, we asked for the three years.
Yeah, no, three years to me isn't too temporary.
Well, uh, it's going to be that long before we are able to build anything. We're talking about a big project.
Right.
So, new projects like that take about a year and a half just to design.
Right, okay.
Go ahead to design it, and it'll be at least two years, uh, well, it'll be about another year and a half under construction after we go to bid and all that kind of stuff, so you can say two years. So, it's, it's going to be a while before there's any permanent structure there.
Okay, but you're working on the, the design right now?
You know, and I have, we're not working on the design yet, we're working on master planning.
Okay.
So, we have to have the board to get to a point where they say, go, you know, and we haven't gotten there yet.
Okay, just, I was curious, and I, and I, I keep forgetting that things are like molasses when it comes to...
Well, it just, you know...
Oh, excuse me, excuse me. Sorry about that. Not learning.
Yeah. And there's, you know, some accountability, you know, that has to be, you know, involved. And so, all of our projects are sealed-in projects, and all of our projects are, you know, state architect license design projects, and, you know, it's all things that, you know, we have. And, you know, these are all things that we have a cadre of engineers and architects working on the last set of buildings.
I'm anxious to see it.
It's going to be visually, if it goes the way I think it's going to go, it's going to be visually more remarkable than anything. Yeah. It's going to be impressive. And that's one of the guidelines that our director is very involved with. He wants this to be impressive. He wants this to be something that is going to be an asset to Lakeport. Not gaudy, not weird.
Right.
But outstanding, outstanding place. And we've got the money to do it.
Is it tribal health that rented the Blockbuster building?
We bought it.
Yeah.
You bought it?
No, we leased it.
You leased it?
It's still owned by, who knows, what's his name? It's a British company.
Renee.
Yeah. No, we leased it. We have a five-year lease with a five-year renewal.
Oh, okay, so conceivably you could be moving that particular ADA area?
I'm not sure what we're going to do with that. I don't think that's going to go up on the hill, but I'm not...
Just possible.
Yeah, it's possible, but I would think...
Maybe that's a big draw by them.
That's a little Pete's claim. And there's some thinking that it's best separate from the rest of the facilities. Because that's open to the general public.
Probably going to be...
Now, we have lots of young women. We have lots of pregnant women. We have lots of... We want that to be marketable to everybody.
Right.
And without any kind of sense that they're going to try to...
And all campus is a good idea as well.
Yeah, and having it close to other things, you know, Plurins is kind of cool because people can go there and then they go get soft yogurt or they can go do whatever, you know. It seems to work. But also it's done well. We have a good Katie Trish.
Any questions? Other questions?
Mr. Chair, too, one of the benefits of, one of the fun parts of working for a small city is I get to perform different functions. So, and I specifically waited till now when the public hearing was open. So, yeah, I'd like to remove my community development hat and put on my economic development shoes.
Oh, yeah.
And one of the things that we looked at specifically here in working with the city's economic development team is we do think it's important on these matters to be flexible. I think this, tribal health is a very important component to our city and to our citizens. And that was one of the reasons we worked very closely with them for a solution, a temporary solution to their parking issues and using some adjacent property they had. And we built that in there. And then same as this, going into that whole sort of... They're experimenting and looking and this is going to help them to be able to design that future project to fit their needs and the needs of the community better as well. So, you know, it's not ideal to have these temporary buildings, but at the same time there is some benefit to these. It allows them to see what works best and then build, you know, a structure, a permanent structure that better meets their needs. So there's my economic development statement. Putting my planner hat back on, the other thing to keep in mind too is any master plan expansion of this facility would certainly, without a doubt, be coming back to this body.
It takes time. A lot of time.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah. Okay, I get it. I'll forgive the three-year. That's not too temporary to me, but it's temporary for what you guys are doing.
In the global, the global business, it's not actually very...
I'm sure Mr. Rugg would much rather have it in a permanent building as well.
I would. Taking up Henry's part in space.
Yeah. So your intentions are to, when you say remove it, does that mean it will be moved to another location or...
No, it's a leased, it's a leased trailer.
Oh, it's leased?
So we'll just give it back to the people who are leasing it.
Okay, good, thanks. We're good.
Well, I would like to say publicly, thank you for your candor. We have a list of bad actors that don't...
Show up.
Show up and say, "We're sorry." And that would go a long ways. And even though this is a minor infraction, I really appreciate it and speaking on behalf of the body, we appreciate that you've come forward and said, "My mistake. We're willing to work with you." And so thank you for that. I appreciate that.
I agree.
And thank you for all that you do too. These guys right here are great.
Aren't they? They really are. We've got a great team here.
Anything else? Thank you very much. Does anybody else in the public would like to speak on this matter? Please come forward. Seeing none, close the public hearing portion and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
No.
No, not much discussed.
Good deal. Let's do it.
I like it as well. I'm looking at the conditions, the three years. I understand the three years. That was really my only question, was the three years. I think that with the understanding that there's an annual report that hopefully the master plan will be created soon and later, that's great. But the one thing that I did notice on here was the potential for an additional permit past the three years. Is there time certain for that? Is that another three-year permit? Is that an annual permit? What's that happen?
It's not an annual permit. Basically, the letter, it's an annual letter telling us what the status is.
No, 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 I mean, if the three years are over, they can, there's a potential to reapply, so... So my question is, is that reapplication a three-year application or is that an annual application? So is that giving them another three years? Because then it's not temporary.
This project, as approved by the planning commission tonight, will be for three years. By the end of July thirteenth, twenty nineteen, this application either expires or they come back and resubmit a new application and give another three years.
And the question is the additional permit for the continuation of use. Do you have an idea of what that is? Is this another similar permit as for three years?
Yeah. Basically, it'd be based on our yearly letter because that'll tell us where they are in their master plan process. And then we could time it closer to the master plan.
So an annual review would be better.
Right, so they get the annual review and if all goes well, then year number two, they're going to say, "Hey, we're in the process. We need another couple of years."
Yeah.
And in the event that they come forward after three years because tribal council can't get together and say, "We haven't got it done yet," then...
You guys, you guys will look at it.
Okay, that's my question. That's all I have. So are there any other questions or discussions regarding this matter? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion for this matter. And this motion will be for categorical exemption.
Honorable Chair, I move that the planning commission find that AR-16-04 is applied for by Lake County Tribal Health. It's category consent pursuant to section 15303(c) of the CECL guidelines.
Having a motion from Commissioner Gainer, do I have a second?
I'll second him.
A second from Commissioner Spur. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five oh. We'll now entertain a motion for the architectural designer approval.
Honorable Chair, I will move that the planning commission find that the architectural and design review applied for by Lake County Tribal Health on the property located at nine-two-five Levin's Court does meet the requirements of section seventeen point two-seven point oh-eight oh of the Lakeport zoning ordinance, consistent with the objectives and policies of the Lakeport general plan and subject to the project conditions of approval, attachment B, and with the findings listed in the July thirteenth staff report. As amended?
No amendment.
No amended?
No amendment.
Do you don't have any amendments?
No amendments.
I was thinking it was about three.
Other than is Levin's Court and not the Levin's Court?
Levin's Court, okay. Dan and I are...
So I have a motion from Russell. Do I have a second?
Honorable Chair, I second that.
I have a second from Commissioner Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to correspondence, planning projects pending. We'll just let the staff tell us what they think.
We have our little update. What's going on with autism, Steven? Anything?
Steven?
Or Steven?
I'm like, who are you talking to?
Your items...
We got something new here.
The important... Now I lost, okay, there's one. Okay, items number two, that's the Five Field Lake County Cars project. And item number nine, Napa Auto Parts. We expect to be working to you guys at the August meeting.
They haven't responded?
No. But they're coming. They're coming.
Yeah, they're...
We're going to get...
They may show up reluctantly, but... Yeah, we'll give a call.
Oh, yeah, no.
Yeah, we notify all applicants.
Yeah.
We'll be in correspondence soon.
And we're going to make it very clear to them that it's definitely in their best interest to attend because otherwise the outcome's probably not going to be in their best interest. But those are likely to be the two items you have before you in August. I don't think that any of these other ones are going to be...
Dare I ask what's going to happen if they don't show?
Why don't we wait and see?
That's a, that's... There'll still be a public hearing and then it will be in the score.
Okay.
Now, for ongoing projects, is there a certain reason why we don't have the City of Lakeport Police Department on here? I mean, isn't that something that's still happening?
Well, the action that you guys took for the zone change and general plan change have been completed. So there's no additional, there's no additional action that we're waiting for on the community development side. We're still, you know, the city is coordinating bids and fulfilling our obligations under USDA grant. But it's not on this list because there's no other additional action required of community development or... But... Yeah, I can update you now or you... We just finished the bid process and we're coordinating those bids. Unfortunately, there were a couple of areas where we didn't get bids, so we're having to go out for a couple of those areas. But it is moving forward and we're expecting that to be completed here as soon as possible. Brad is ensuring that it...
The permit process or the start of the project?
The actual construction.
Good.
Which is just mostly interior and the fences. The other one that I can provide you an update on is Autozone. We have completed the review of the building permit and the final improvements. At this point, we're just waiting for some very minor things to be adjusted so they can record their actual map for the parcel map. And then they would be cleared to begin construction here, hopefully in the near future, very near future. Hopefully, they'll be moving forward prior to our next meeting. Any other questions on any of the other ones that are on here?
How's our Twisted Sisters doing?
They're doing dumb work. They're working, aren't they?
Yeah, they're still working through the building process.
I have had several phone calls regarding downtown.
Are there any other questions on this? Are we ready to go? Because I have lots of other reports on some of those projects for you. I can give you some information on those.
Yeah, I just...
Okay, segueing into that?
Segueing right into that, please.
Downtown first?
Yeah, please.
Downtown is progressing pretty well. I hope that you guys have been able to see it, I think, since our last meeting. They have completed that first segment of block there in front of Museum Park.
Time out right there. Question, and I got this from a lot of people.
Sidewalk completion, perhaps.
So I have to ask this on behalf of the many people who have asked me, "What was the reasoning for leaving the old concrete barrier between the new concrete and the park?"
From Museum Park? That's actually historical structure.
That's baloney. That's a broken-down piece of concrete from one end to the other.
And then the other piece that I would say is it's not on our property.
Really?
It does have historical...
I would argue that...
The materials wouldn't let us do it years ago.
It's concrete and it's busted to pieces. My grandfather back in the day wanted to take it back over that thing because it was broken then.
Well, I think the actual, the approved design features actually include taking some of those elements...
I thought so.
Into the rest of the project as an optional feature somewhere down the line.
Yeah, but I... Well, I'll just report back to those who've asked me over the last three weeks because they were in Fourth of July and they're like, "Hey, this is great, but what is this?"
The simple answer would be it's not on our property.
Wow.
I said the same thing. I'm like, you know, what is, why is that?
Wow, okay, so...
But personally, I think that's...
Has anybody asked the county?
Baloney.
I'm not going to.
It's busted to pieces and it's falling apart.
Well, they can fix it, but I think the architectural style...
Well, architectural's great. You know what they, what I was suggested I should mention, so I will pass along so that I can say so, is to tear it out, rebuild it so that it's straight and it looks like it used to. That would be great. It's just concrete.
I can carry that message forward, that I can...
That's why we're tearing out all the work. They'll do it.
Making you beautiful sidewalks and then we have this destroyed piece of concrete. It's just terrible.
On that note, one of the things that's delayed the completion of the next segment of block that they're just finishing up, probably as we speak, I guess it would be the west side of the block between third and fourth and a little bit between fourth and fifth, is when we remove the existing sidewalk from those building faces, the condition of some of those buildings was not good. So there's, our engineer and Granite came together and came up with a solution to get that sidewalk there to hold and then still allow them, those building owners at a future date, to maybe make some of the necessary repairs that they're in their best interest to do sooner than later. Our, Tom Carlton, our building official, has met with a couple of those owners and, you know, and kind of discussed some potential options on how to get some of those fixed. But that did delay the project a little bit. We're also probably expecting that to occur as we move down the rest of the project as well. So we do have some contingencies to help speed that up in the process and so hopefully we'll start catching up. Right now, I think if you look at the original project schedule, we should be demoing the east side of the block between second and third, but we're probably, I think this evening actually, they will begin demolition of the west side of the block between third and fourth. They're completing that corner by Peggy Campbell's building this evening and then beginning demolition on the other. Because if you saw today, the parking was opened back up on that other side. That was in our contract. That's the big piece. We don't allow them to start demoing a second block face until that parking is open again to the public. So we have no more than one-sided, one block face where we have eliminated parking. So if they're able to complete that, they've opened everything else up, they will then be cleared by us to go ahead and start demo work on there. So it's likely and hopefully tomorrow morning, when you go down there, you will see those ramps on the other side of the street as we begin where Twisted Sisters is and Grand Forest Kindles, that born face.
Whose responsibility is it when they run into those situations with the buildings that are so old that have boo-boos?
It depends. It's very situational. I mean, if it's something that's structurally an issue, then the worst-case scenario potentially is our building official would have to, you know, tell them that there's a problem. But luckily, we haven't got that. I don't anticipate that being a problem. But what we have done is say, "Hey, this is something you may want to look at sooner rather than later." And, but at the same time, we did come up with a nice solution where we were able to get those sidewalks in so that there's still the ability for them to make those building improvements without ripping out our new sidewalk.
That's a big deal.
That was a big deal.
Just to note, our city engineer as well as our building official checked out the buildings on this side of the road, which have basements and are easily accessible. So, you know, hopefully, underwood, you know, it'll go a little smoother.
Well, another thing I asked Kevin about is the irregularity of the sidewalk. And he gave me a wonderful explanation that maybe the public might be interested in as well.
Sure. One of the big components that our engineer, Paul Corin, brought to our attention when brought to our attention when he first came on, because it wasn't part of that project, was the original project scope did not include ADA access, which was, you know, other than at the corners and a lot of sidewalk, but it didn't address the issue of building ADA access, which he was able to incorporate in. So, you know, right now, the existing sidewalk has a uniform curb face. Like, it's either six or eight inches, I'm not sure. But now, if you look closely at it, it, it undulates a little bit. And that's to take into account, if you, I, I tell you, it was eye-opening for me, go look at one of the block faces that has not been completed yet and focus on the entries to those buildings. They're all over the place. And so, one of the elements that we were able to accomplish was providing not only an ADA sidewalk, but that when this project is completed, all the buildings within that project area will have ADA-compliant access as well. And I think that's...
Huge.
That's a, it's a huge feature. I don't think that the public or the businesses have quite fully grasped what kind of benefit that means. Because right now, if one of those businesses come in and they want to remodel, they're subject to these ADA requirements that would add additional costs that might include those entry, which are, are quite costly. And those are being taken care of as part of this project. I mean, they're, they'll still be subject to what other ADA requirements are required inside, but crossing those hurdles was, was a big deal. And it took some time, because you can't just make it ADA accessible. You have to still make sure that the drainage operates appropriately as well. So, there was a lot of engineering that was done with that.
So, the store owners should be very grateful to the city for taking on some of that expense.
I think it's gonna be a great benefit to the community.
Yeah, I think so.
Absolutely. Yeah, and just looking at the original project scope, we're, we're perhaps two weeks behind, but in speaking with our project engineer, that was, we kind of built in a little bit of a contingency there. So, we're still relatively in that area where we feel comfortable that we're still gonna have this completed right in around that Labor Day holiday.
Are they gonna try to make up some of that time?
It's our, it's our hope that they can. I'm, but I'm just being realistic about it. You're gonna keep encountering riddle issues overnight. One of the other issues that we had, and our city crews have been out assisting these past couple nights, is when we did some of the original potholing to identify where utilities are located right up against the buildings. Unfortunately, some of that original potholing, we identified all the sewer areas. Well, it turned out some of those things that we thought were sewer were actually storm drain, roof drains. So, we've had to go back out and try and actually locate, okay, that's not the sewer. Where is it? So, we're doing that, the city's participating in that as a means of making sure that we still are able to keep pushing this forward on time and on schedule. Let's see, I'll, I'll let Dan talk really quickly about the progress that we're making in regards to the lakefront planning grant.
Yeah, we're, we're still in the process of public input. Our, the last Friday in June, two of the consultants and myself set up a booth at the, at the concert in the park in Library Park. We, we got a pretty good turnout. Candy works really well. And basically, on July 6th of 2016, we had a public meeting for the Lakeport, Lakefront Revitalization Plan. Some planning commissioners may have remembered that there was like a survey that was done. So, the public meeting included the survey, didn't, didn't have the charrettes like the original stakeholders meeting had, but we had a pretty good turnout. Twenty-eight, thirty people showed up at that public meeting. Right now, we do have what's known as a survey monkey, which is a process on our, that has been placed on our Facebook and our website where anybody in the public can go in and do this survey for the questions that were brought up at that public meeting, as well as the stakeholder, the same questions at the stakeholders meeting. If you haven't walked, well, you probably can't walk tonight, but I had the corner of, of Main Street and 3rd Street, there is a window display that we kind of set up that people could look in. You notice the big brown paper? We kind of blocked that eyesore view that you were talking about. So, that was Kevin and I's little construction site.
It was hot in there.
Yeah. Late afternoon when the sun beats down that way, it is...
Nasty.
It is bad.
He should have just stood in the window like a mannequin.
So, we kind of have that set up, and we'll be changing periodically as, as the information comes in. And that's, you know, so keep an eye on that corner.
Picking up on that, that survey, it's, if you go to our, to the City of Lakeport website, we have set up a page specifically for the, the lakefront plan, and it includes a link to this survey. Additionally, Andrew has been assisting us. He runs our Facebook stuff, so he's, he's put out that ad on the Facebook, on Facebook as well. What, what the consultant has traditionally found, and this has been helpful, and this is why not only we had a traditional public meeting, we're doing this survey, but we've also, he also, both of them were out here for that concert in the park, is trying to get a full grasp of the community. Because as we saw with the, typically of these public meetings that you hold, you tend to get a older audience. As opposed to the surveys, you tend to get a younger audience, and then you're able to, you know, sort of pick up both out there in the park. And so, that's, one of the fundamental pieces of this whole grant was to make sure that we got viable community buy-in. And so, so far, we've been very happy with the design workshop we're working with to make sure that this plan isn't just, you know, the thirty people that could show up, but it includes a balance of stakeholders, government agencies, public of all age ranges. So, and I'm really excited about the next component, that second public meeting. What they're doing right now is they're taking all the pieces that they've gathered thus far from the public stakeholders, and addition to the economic study that they have done, and they're currently, you know, doing their, their biological review as well, looking at some of the other environmental issues that are gonna influence this project. They're taking all those pieces together and drafting a plan. That plan is also going to include several different alternatives. So, that next public meeting, and we're gonna, you know, push hard, try to get a, we're not gonna try, we're gonna get a notice that's sent out with the utility billing to try and get a larger group here, and they're gonna present those alternatives. And that's gonna be a very important public meeting where you're gonna get, as a community, get a chance to pick, okay, I like this, I don't like that, and, and really build a plan that is, is appropriate for the development that this community wants to see. I don't, we don't have a date yet, and I'm not gonna take a guess at one, but we'll certainly let you guys know when that's coming available. After that point, they'll provide us with a final draft. It would come to you guys first for review and a recommendation for adoption, and then ultimately to the city accounts, the city council for approval. Did I miss any other components of it?
The draft economics.
Oh, yeah, we also, we also should have, we have a draft economic development analysis, economic analysis that we're reviewing in-house, making some corrections too. But once that's finalized, we will make sure that that's put up on the website as well and, and make that available for the public to review so that that can be a part of the discussion at that next public meeting as well. There weren't really any, I'm not gonna, the public may disagree. I didn't find that there were any major surprises in that economic, it kind of, it kind of talked about, it validated with some factual information some of the things that folks around here have already known. So, I don't anticipate there being major surprises in there. On some of the, a couple of the other, you know, our, our current planning operations have been pretty slow, but we're trying to take advantage of that and move forward. We have a number of different grants, we just talked about two alone, or two projects that are in process. But I'll give you an update on a couple others. The Carnegie Library ADA Accessibility, at our last city council meeting, they approved a contract with a licensed historical architect to begin the design process for ADA accessibility upgrades to the Carnegie Library, which would once again make that building available to public use. And then, once we have that spread away, we'll, we do have money in that grant for the construction of the actual accessibility items as well. Once we have that, we can start to have some, some community discussions on how we want to integrate that. So, that's a huge piece to that lakefront plan as well, and that's moving forward as well. Another one that you guys are familiar with is 1255 Martin Street. They're with the senior housing project. We did get official notice over this past month that they did receive their home grant. And they are now, the city actually has a, it's, they've got a grant proposal that's going for the council's approval at their next meeting on the 19th for a CDBG grant, sort of a sister grant to that, to construct the required off-site improvements, which were, you know, running the sidewalk down to, to connect up with the other, the other project there on Martin Street, and then the sewer project as well, which they have decided, we provided them with the two alternatives of perhaps looking at, either coming down Martin, which was tough, or purchasing the other property and alternatively getting an easement through there. And working with Paul Corin, our city engineer, I think they've come up with a really good economically viable solution, and it will be placing that sewer line in the Martin right away, which is probably a preferred scenario anyway. So, that project's moving forward. July 19th, the council will review that application, and we'll submit it to CDBG, and then hopefully within a three-month time period, we'll, we'll hopefully get that grant as well. And then they're off to the races as far as actually doing the physical construction elements with building permits and all that fun stuff that, as Steve Rugg alluded to earlier, that's still quite a process.
So, what's their projected start date?
They would, the, the CDBG grant, I believe, has construction occurring next summer. We're gonna, we're gonna probably try and get, even before we get awarded the grant, maybe have an RFP out so that we don't have to award that contract until we actually physically get funded, but to try and reduce that window. We're looking at probably getting an RFP out in February, and then we should hopefully know right around that time too whether we get funded. So, to try and shave off some time so that they're able to construct in next, next construction. I had one other one. Oh, we should be knowing, we should know here in, prior to our next meeting in August, whether or not the grant that we applied for in regards to a hotel feasibility study is through the Economic Development Agency is awarded or not. So, hopefully, I'll have some good news there as well. So, even though current planning is slow, we're doing what you're supposed to do, which is trying to get some of these long-term planning issues in the queue, and Dan is still moving forward, and we're hoping to get that general plan inconsistencies, stuff taken care of in this available window as well. So, that should be coming back to you guys here shortly.
Deal. It's a good update. It answers a lot of questions. I can report back to different people.
Yes, please do. And I mean, and if there's additional questions, they can, they can come talk to them.
That's what I tell them, but I seem to get the phone call, so... Say, hey, call City Hall. They'll, they'll tell you. Any, anything else? No? Comments from staff? Well, I don't have any comments. All, all I'll say is that this past two weekends, I was witness to two really close calls at the intersection of 11th and Main, and specifically the crosswalk by Sarducis going across right there. In one incident, there was a truck parked in the access to the crosswalk, and someone stepped out. And in the second one, there was a boat trailer that took up the very same parking lot. So, I guess, I guess my question is, is it clearly marked with big red paint that you can't park there? Because...
It is if it was painted.
Right, so, I mean, I know there's no parking signs, but it's not working.
Generally, we don't mark a crosswalk as...
But this is where, this is, you know where I'm...
I know exactly where you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's in a real bad spot. Well, the, the actual crosswalk itself is being blocked by vehicles, and so people are going around with vehicles to get into the street, and it's closed. I saw it too. I saw it too. So, maybe it's a review to look at the crosswalk itself.
I will, I'll let the police department know that they need to be looking at that as potential... Because they can, with or without the red curb, they can ticket it. I mean, that's, that's a...
Well, the tough thing is that all intersections are pet exit, pet access, right? It doesn't have to be marked, but in this particular location, because of that driveway and the little building, it's a tough spot.
It creates a horrid sight distance issue.
Yeah.
And that's a complicated intersection anyway, so drivers are already distracted looking at other motorists and what, turning movements and stuff. So, this was a discussion that came up at our Traffic Safety Advisory Committee this Monday, that both Suzanne and George sit on there. We talked about that corridor in general.
11th Street.
Going all the way, kind of from 11th around Clear Lake and back to North High. The, we have instituted this, kind of similar to our code enforcement complaint forms. We have complaint forms that are available for traffic issues as well. And since instituting that with, with the beginning of getting TSAC back up on its feet again, we've got a number of them, and a lot of them are all focused in that area. So, that's why we felt it worthy to have that discussion with TSAC.
We did address that.
And I guess going back to my update, another grant that we're looking at is that Public Works Engineering and Community Development are putting together here, the due date for the grant is mid-August, is H-SIP, Highway Safety Improvement Program through Caltrans, which traditionally is a very tough grant for rural areas to get because it's, it's this morbid ratio of accident data. You know, a, a missing limb is worth this much, a, you know, crushed skull is worth this much, and your improvement values can be within a certain ratio of that. As a handout to us lonely rural communities, they've created within that program what's called a systemic H-SIP program, where we can use the accident data for our entire city to do some small, small safety improvements that we have, you know, deferred maintenance sort of stuff that we have. And what we're looking at doing, actually, one of the interns we have over the summer is quantifying lines, stop bars, stop legends, turning arrows, and stuff like that right now for all of our major arterial and collector roads, and then also around the school areas. So, it's our plan this year to apply to get that thermal plastic stuff that actually lasts. About five years ago, we, we were using a different lining material that lasted a little longer because of some stormwater issues in regards to the runoff and chemicals that come off of those previous lines. We've had to switch to other materials that they just, they frankly don't last. I mean, if, if you've noticed, they've been doing some sidewalk, or not sidewalk, crosswalk improvements on South Main, watch them, watch those. I mean, those are brand-new ones that we put down here. I guarantee you in six months, they're gonna be coming apart. I mean, the real answer is that thermal plastic sort of stuff. But it's expensive, and it's only worth our while if we are doing a large area. So, this is an opportunity to kind of get that economy to scale and, and come in and be able to put some lines down on, you know, and that includes crosswalks, I didn't say crosswalks, along all those major areas. The county, their Public Works Department has been successful the past couple of years in getting the systemic grants. We're working, their, their staff has been very helpful to us, insisting us with, with imparting their grant knowledge on this. We're hopeful that we can turn this in and do that. Then, next year, we can apply for it again and maybe look at signage upgrades. So, this is an opportunity that hopefully is gonna be available to us for a couple of years, which, as you know, from our budget discussions, our roads budget is, is taking a big hit. So, this is hopefully an avenue to kind of supplement that loss.
Let's put that word "budget" off to the side for today.
I'm still wondering, Kevin, if we, and we have quite a discussion on this at the Traffic and Safety Commission. I'm just wondering if we can't, as a city, do some red lines on that... I'll talk to Doug Ryder about that, but on the, on the side, on each side of Sarducis, because that is a problem. If we can't do that twenty-foot red, red zone on that, I don't...
As I stated in, in TSAC at that time, I, I'm not sure that that's gonna...
It might help.
Be beneficial, it's gonna... Be beneficial, it's going to, we're going to, we'd have those business owners.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
On our, uh, the worst of the following day. Um, it's, it's a tough one. I would, all the suggestions that TSAC took back, I, I presented and gave to our city engineer today.
Okay.
Um, and hopefully we'll have, be able to present some options and alternatives.
A better location for that crosswalk designation would be further south by the Mallard. That would be more appropriate at the, at the intersection for this next one by Cindy's Drive, or the Drive and Renee's rather. So, yeah.
I mean, that's, that, that, that wasn't one we discussed all.
I mean, it's only, it's only a hundred feet or so south, but it's, it's still an intersection, it's still relatively close to those folks. And, and even though they're allowed by law to cross where they want to on the intersection, maybe just seeing the intersection lines on that intersection rather than on 11th and Main.
That's, that's not a bad, that's not a bad one.
Might be visually.
I'll add that to the list for our engineer to.
It seems like a long stretch of North Main with no crosswalks and a lot of.
Well, every intersection they can go whether there's one there or not, right? And that's the law, they can cross at any intersection.
Yeah, but, but I mean, for that section of park where, um, where.
Well, I, let's put it this way, when, when I have friends come up and stay at, at what is, used to be Anchorage, we never crossed that 11th Street. We always walk down and cut across because it's just too hard.
Too hard.
It's too hard.
Yeah.
It's too hard.
Yeah.
So anyways.
It's a, it's a big problem.
Yeah.
And that's what we're trying to.
Well, you know what, the solution maybe is just to buy that lot and then put in a big roundabout.
We have looked at that and we actually.
Buy that lot, put in a roundabout, get the four-shaped property to take those trees out.
We were successful in obtaining, uh, a little small bit of money through our regional transportation body, uh, this, this current budget here now, um, that is going to allow us to do a small, uh, traffic study to look at some potential options for the 11th Street corner, which is another.
Yeah, that's brutal.
No.
There are no easy solutions on that one.
No, there's not.
We've got to start.
There's, I, I had a suggestion, and I'm sorry to bring this longer, but I had a suggestion from, from a person that said that, you know, a lot of those side streets should be blocked where you have two or three access points, like Manzanito would be a good access point, High Street would be a good access point. But the other two or three streets in between like Rush, just block them off so that you have two lanes. And so they basically become little cul-de-sacs on the south side and the north side on 11th Street, just in those block sections. Keeps people from trying to access, they can still get around by going on 10th Street or by going through the boulevard, but it blocks any, anybody trying to get onto the street where they can't see either direction with all the trees. That was one suggestion. The other one was is just make a two-lane, a proper two-lane and sidewalk the whole thing and cause people to go slow.
Problem with.
It's all hard.
Is, uh, that's a prescriptive easement.
Yeah.
Believe it or not, a lot of our major roads, you know, major connector roads, is only a prescriptive easement, they don't have a right-of-way through them.
That's right.
So it's, there's, there's no easy solutions there, but we got to start looking.
Yeah, the other thing is, is for pedestrians, they got the telephone poles in the sidewalk.
That's it.
They walk out in the street, you know, the telephone poles. So it's kind of a weird situation.
Well, there's a long conversation as to whether or not that should have been built in the first place, but we'll do that for another day.
We have nothing better to do.
Yeah, okay, so, is anything else? No? Okay, so our next discussion, scheduled meeting and so forth will be on August 10th, 2016. With that, we are adjourned.